The Warren Softball Field nomination and recommendation. Request to modify and approve the 2022-23 school calendar for the Ashland High School prom. Approval of a new co-curricular club and club advisor stipend for the Ashland Middle School Dungeons and Dragons Club. To allocate and appropriate funds from the FY22 operating budget for the David Mendez School Building Project. A superintendent's update, it's really the process for superintendent's summative evaluation. And assistant superintendent update, Warren approvals. Consent actions include approval of April 28th, 22 meeting minutes, May 5th, 2022 meeting minutes, acceptance of gifts and donations, and any updates and future action items. So before we begin, we need to have the, the school committee reorganized. Therefore, I'm looking for someone to.
Roll call first.
Do we need to do that? Yeah, we'll take a roll call just because we have folks that aren't here as well. Let me get the people who are virtual. Tina Fatanides.
Here.
And Erin Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mark Terry.
I'm here.
And Lori Tosti.
I am here.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna need, yeah.
Yes, we're here.
And Lori's here as well. So I will take a motion or a nomination, I should say, first and foremost, for the Chair of the Ashland School Committee for the school year 2022-23. Is there a motion?
I move to nominate Lori Tosti as the Chair of the School Committee.
I will second that.
And before any discussion, Ms. Tosti, are you interested?
I would be honored to chair the School Committee again. Thank you.
Any, any comments?
I'll just, you know, make one. I think it's, you know, it's probably unusual for somebody to serve for a decade or whatever in this role. Some people are gluttons for punishment, I suppose, but I think for me, it's, you know, important to go on record as saying, I think this is the right thing for this School Committee. You know, I think you do a phenomenal job, Lori, in making sure everybody is, is heard, has their opportunity to participate to the, the degree they have been. And, you know, I certainly feel that for the last seven years that I've served with you, I've had every opportunity to participate at the level I want to on this committee. And I'm pleased to have you serve as our Chair for another year.
Thank you, Mark.
I would say everything he said, but he said it better, so.
I would also add, you know, kind of as the, the newer person here at the table, that I have really valued Lori's leadership over my first year on the School Committee. I find her to be exceptionally open to, to hearing all points of view, and I think she's a very fair leader. She does, she's not someone who takes control of the School Committee, but, but rather gives us all a voice. And so I, I support her as Chair.
Thank you, everyone. I, I do want to just say a couple of things because we did get an email this week from a, a member of the community saying, why would the School Committee have somebody chairing for several years in a row? So I just want to share from my point of view, and thank you all so much for your comments. And it's been a great honor to be in this position. But, you know, personally, I've done it because I, I enjoy it. I've always looked for a way to, whatever, if I have a skill set, hope to, to be able to share it in this way. And I've really had a lot of respect for everybody that I'm working with. The superintendent and the administrative team and every School Committee member that's here. And so for that reason, it's actually a pleasure. And I think that this committee works as a group, and there's nobody that's more important than anybody else. We all have one vote. Anyone who's ever wanted any position of leadership has been able to step into that. And honestly, it was really, I think, only in my maybe first or second year that there was any kind of a, a battle over the Chair seat, if you will. I'm certainly not looking to, to hoard it, but I am looking to do what's best for this group and, and what's best for Ashland and what fits with what I can offer. So, so I just wanted to share that because it's a valid question, because there are other people that do things in different ways for different reasons. But one of the greatest parts of this is knowing that everyone here is only ever making decisions about what's best for Ashland and Ashland students. And so it's, it's about that more than anything else. So thank you for your confidence, but because of all of you that I, I'm willing and honored to keep doing it. So thank you.
So we need to make this, excuse me, we need to make this formal. Can we take a vote then, please? Start with the folks who are virtual. Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Lori?
Aye, we'll do it.
Okay. So now I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Chair so she can get the rest of the positions filled.
Yes. So next up, we are looking for nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Mark Terry.
She's gotta figure out this virtual present thing. Erin, you're, you can tell that she's on, she's on Zoom often, so she knows how to get right in there. Mark Terry, do we have a second?
I would second that. As long as he's willing to do it, I, I think, back when everything we said before, I think things are working well. And I think, yeah, so that there's not a reason to, to make a change at this point. I think he's been doing a great job, and if he's willing to do it, I, I would support him still doing it.
Thank you, Paul. And I am, I'm not gonna make any speech. I thought Lori spoke quite eloquently about how we function, and, and I agree. So I, I'm more than happy to continue serving in that role. Thank you.
But I do want to add though, too, like your leadership. I mean, we do really approach this as a team. We meet together with Jim as a team. We talk about everything that is going on, what needs to go on the agenda that happens as a team. I have so valued your input on every single issue, and it, it would really be a great honor to keep working with you.
Thank you, Lori.
So I'm looking for, we had, do we have a second? You seconded it. So I'm looking for votes, so I'll start with you, Erin.
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me. Thank you. And then next up is everybody's favorite position, the Secretary. Anybody? Any volunteers? Any nominations?
I'm happy to still do it if somebody wants to nominate me.
I was, I'm happy to nominate Tina Fatanides to serve as our Secretary.
I will second it.
And thank you for being willing to do that.
And doing a great job with it. Thanks, Tina. It's, you know, not always the, the favorite job, but it's a really important one, so thanks. Okay, all in favor? Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye for me. And Tina?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, guys, moving on to the, thank you, everyone, moving on to the rest of the agenda.
I don't, I don't know if we have anybody from the public, but we did defer that.
Yes, I noticed.
I don't see anyone from the public on there.
I don't either, but we do have a, someone in the room who, who's on the agenda, right? We'll be speaking on the agenda, but as a member of the public, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Or is there anybody, resident of Ashland, who's watching that wants to offer a comment?
Gotta find a different place to put that screen.
I know. It's a, it's a little weird.
If we're all looking this way, it's because that's where the screen in the room is.
That's where, we have a screen behind us and a screen to my right, so. And Jim's next to me with a laptop. Hearing none, seeing none. I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's vote of approval, the recommendation from the naming subcommittee regarding the nomination and recommendation regarding the Warren Softball Field. We've talked about this before. There was a subcommittee. We had all of the information presented to us. Maybe it was last month at this point. And this kind of thing requires two meetings. So this is our second meeting, and I'm just gonna ask if anybody has any questions or concerns about what was shared with us since the last time we talked about this.
And just to qualify, I assume there's been no changes of any, of any substance?
None at all. Nope. This is, and I'm just putting up on the screen for folks to see we're there.
And if there's anything that you guys want to add? Or you just want to?
No, well, I talked to the, you know, the subcommittee, and, and we feel comfortable with this moving forward, and we're just looking for the final vote.
Okay.
So we can move forward with it.
Who's got the motion? I think it's in our packet.
It is in the packet.
I move to approve the placement of a sign at the Warren School Softball Field with the following inscription. Welcome to the Warren School Field, home of Ashland Girls Softball. Do your best, be brave, always have fun. This sign is dedicated in memory of Coach Andy Limburner.
We have a second for that?
Second.
And then all in favor, Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me. Congratulations and thank you.
All good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. I know this was a lot of, a lot of time spent from yourself and others involved in, in youth softball to kind of come up with a solution that worked for everybody, so I really, thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you. We're, we're very pleased with this and very happy that we got Honored Coach Andy in this way, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, and we'll be looking forward to seeing that out there. Yeah.
Thank you.
When do you expect to be able to, to get the sign put up?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Not your department.
One, one step at a time.
We'll call Mr. Kathy.
Well, you're done with us, so that's a big relief. You're done with us, you're done with all the, the red tape, and you're all set to go.
Don't feel obligated to stay.
Yeah, so thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
Next up, modify and approve the 2022-2023 school calendar regarding the HHS prom.
Yeah, so typically, the Friday of prom is an early release professional development day. When we approved the calendar back in November, we didn't have the correct date on there. They were securing the facility. So now we're just looking to, to finalize that one date. So it's moving the early release day, which was May 26th. It's, that's the weekend, the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, to the, the prior week, Friday, May 19th, so we can have an early release day for the prom. I know Kelly and all of Ashland High School would be appreciative of that. Certainly, we have a lot of students take advantage and, or would take advantage of not coming in or being released early to go get their hair done or, you know, things of that nature. So that's all I'm looking to do. That's the only change to the calendar.
Does that, does that become a district-wide?
Correct. It's district-wide early release. It's one of our, yep.
So that was a question that I had. Sorry, I'll let you pivot, Lori. There you go.
Yeah, I see you.
I, I had a lot of community feedback this week regarding the lower, the two elementary schools being wrapped up in that, where it's very unlikely to have like a sibling involved, et cetera, and that they're losing a school day, usually the Friday before Memorial Day. So just, is there a way to do it split schools like we do with other conference days, like when Warren or Mendez has conferences, but like the middle school doesn't, and those kids go full day and some kids go half day, like?
Yeah, I, certainly, Erin, I think that's something we should discuss with the union. It's, contractually, we have a day in there. It doesn't say we can split that up currently between schools, but it also does impact our transportation, impacts a, a number of areas. So I certainly, you know, can, you know, empathize with, with families of younger kids and only having the older kids being the ones released, so.
But at the same time, if it wasn't that day.
Right. There's another day.
It'd be a different day.
That's right. It's gonna be another day for sure, right?
Right, right. So I, I think her point is that currently, they're getting a four-day weekend, or, or a longer weekend, because it's abutting a three-day weekend, right? So.
But it's not. It was. It's not. We're moving it away from there.
Right, right, right. So, so the, so the ones that have nothing to do with the prom.
Oh, I got you.
Are losing that extended weekend, right?
Correct.
The, the extension of the weekends. I think that's the point.
Yeah.
Which is a valid point, but, you know.
It's also.
It might make sense to look at it and see, you know, does that negatively impact, hey, where there are childcare issues with, you know, those, those older kids, you know, and watching them or?
And we gotta remember.
But they also get out at different times.
We're looking at, I mean, booking just hotel, or hotels or facilities or function halls for proms are usually booking a couple of years out. And it's, it's a challenge to get, you know, a place and finding, you know, a very consistent date, where our prom has always been right around this, this Friday. So.
Yeah.
But it's certainly something to consider, for sure.
Yeah, so, so would you, would you recommend voting this change and then?
Yeah, and then.
Then investigating if that's feasible.
Yes, and then evaluating it.
If feasible coming back?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's a good point.
I move to approve the revised 22-23 school calendar, including an early release day on May 19, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye?
I, I do have a missing curve here. If, if we know the 2024 prom date yet, you know, or as soon as you get that, and let us know, that'd be great.
We don't, but we traditionally look for this weekend because AP exams are over. There's an SAT.
June 4th.
I know they moved next year's because of the SAT, so we look to avoid that date, and we look to avoid Memorial Day weekend.
That's better.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up, approval of new co-curricular club and club advisor stipend regarding the AMS Dungeons and Dragons Club.
So Chris is at the Maswell Conference, so he asked me to present this. We do have a number of students who are participating in a Dungeons and Dragons Club. We have the funding for these stipend positions. It's just, we don't have that actual name of that club. So we've done this before, so it's really just looking for the approval. He has worked out with the union, the stipend amount, which is the 1429, which is consistent with the other clubs that run exactly the same amount of time. So that's all we're looking to do.
So are we both creating the club and the stipend, or just the stipend?
It would be, you'd have to create both.
Okay.
It's got one recommended motion that does both.
Right, it candles both, approve the club and the stipend.
It does, it's an approve and a stipend.
Yeah.
Yep.
And do we also, am I remembering right, when we've created these clubs before, we also have to create like a, an account with it, and that's a separate motion?
No, those are for student activity accounts, yeah.
Okay.
Similar, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's only, it's only if there's gonna be, you know, funds collected and expended for that club.
There's no collection here.
So am I doing on motion duty tonight?
Yep.
I move to approve the co-curricular club and stipend as presented for the Ashland Middle School Dungeons and Dragons Club.
I'll second.
And then all in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye for me. Erin?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, the allocate and appropriate funds from FY22 operating budget for the David Mendez School Building Project.
All right, so I guess I'll, I'll, I'll lead it, I'll lead it off, and then I'll ask Jim to add the color commentary about how, you know, how and why we're able to do it. So as, as we've talked about in the past, the COVID hit the two big building projects in town very differently. So we, we've, as we were doing that, we, we've talked a lot with Jim and, and Michael Herbert, and, you know, so as that budgetary pressure hit, we were look, always looking to see how we would absorb things. Now, we ended up being better than we had feared, but we still had to transfer about $1.1 million out of our contingency funds. That's typically done for change orders, just to, you know, be able to award the, the end contract, which is what we call the GMP. So because we are now down that 1.1 in the contingency, we're able to go forward. It's not like the sky's falling, but it, it is tight. And so we, we still thought it would be appropriate to look to see how we could compensate for that. So, you know, given the, the different things that occurred this year with the federal funding and all these other, other things that have occurred, it allows us this year to, you know, to have $250,000 in our, our operating budget that we could use towards this. What we're gonna do tonight is the methodology, we've talked with, with the municipal employees, so, so we've talked with Brittany and Michael about just the mechanics of doing it. And the easiest thing to do is, as, as many of us are well aware, our operating budget needs to be spent within the fiscal year. Anything that's not falls to free cash, which then gets certified in October, and then at Fall Town Meeting, the, gets appropriated based on our policies. And so our intent here is to leave $250,000 unspent this year to fall into free cash with the expectation that at Fall Town Meeting, after free cash is certified, that we would be able to then appropriate at Town Meeting that funding to the project.
Paul, then, is it, is it a majority vote at Town Meeting, or is that, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess I'm interested in, from hearing from either one of you, but I suspect this is a Jim question. You know, we're not typically in the position of having an extra $250,000 at the end of the fiscal year. Paul may have alluded to this in terms of how federal funding has come in, but can we just talk about, you know, what, how that money is coming to be or would come to be? And we're sitting here now, what, six weeks left in the fiscal year? And, you know, what, what we either are deferring in terms of other costs, or how does it, how does it work?
Sure. Yeah, there, so there are a few things, right? And we had, Chris did do a little presentation for us a little ways back. The significant portion of the $250,000 comes from salary savings throughout the district and it, in a, in a couple forms. One, using some of the ESAR funds, which were one-time funds that we spent on salaries this year, which we originally had budgeted for in the operating fund, some of those funds. Secondly, we had a number of retirees. We had a, a big group of retirees for the FY22 school year, which we didn't have, when we budgeted and had our budget approved, last Town Meeting, we didn't know exactly how many folks there would be that retired, and therefore their replacements came in at a lower cost on the scale, on the teacher scale and paraprofessional scales, et cetera. So we have savings there, and we had some additional reserves that we'd, we'd set aside for, for salaries that, that we didn't need to utilize this year. So, so it's a, it really is a one-time savings this year because of those factors. We've managed the budget the rest of the year. We have not, we've not put a freeze on the budget. Everyone's been able to spend what they needed to, but we've been cognizant of where we could save some, some funds and make sure that we can have that $250,000 set aside for this project. I, I will say, Chris does a phenomenal job of scrubbing every single account and every line item, where we're adjusting the balance of, of each line pretty much on a, on a weekly basis. So he feels really comfortable with this, as do I, moving forward in the end of the year. Like you said, we have about six weeks to go in the fiscal year, and we're in a great spot to be able to do this.
And so I guess the, the only other question I have, that I can think of at the moment is what, you know, if, if this returns to free cash, Paul explained mechanically how it works, and I get that, but what guarantees do we have that it's actually gonna be applied to the building project, and it's gonna go where we're, where we're hoping it will go?
Well, I mean, to think of, let's go back six, seven years, five, six years ago, when we talked about kindergarten, tuition-free kindergarten, when we moved, that's exactly the same mechanism, that we're, we designated at Town Meeting specifically those funds were to go towards a very specific project. That was for a kindergarten, when we, I think it was $250,000, nine or five, about the same amount, right?
Something like that.
And then this will be the same mechanism, Mark. So the guarantee becomes when we have the language voted at, at Town Meeting.
That's the point I'm getting at, is, is that we're doing this on, on faith.
Absolutely.
It'll follow through, but, but it's gonna be up to Town Meeting to vote.
That is correct, 100%.
Yeah, so it, it's gonna be the collaboration with, you know, Michael Herbert, the Select Board and FinCom to put that on the warrant in, in that way. And we've discussed this, and I think the, the thing we felt really strongly about is if we're going to go to the proverbial well, this should be the first stop, right? And we shouldn't be looking first at capital and other places if we could do this, if, if there was an ability to do it. It shows the commitment that we have to the project, so. But it, it does require that collaboration to Town Meeting.
We're taking a little bit of a risk, but we're, we're trusting that it's all, and there's no reason not to, but things do happen. Different people end up in different roles, you know?
Right.
Pandemics hit, whatever. Things do happen, as we know, but it seems like it's a reasonable way forward.
Yeah, I can, I can say in, in other towns and in other situations, it would be a, I think, a problematic risk that probably somebody wouldn't take, but I think, given the, the boards and the collaboration we do have, I, you know, I have very faith that everybody's gonna honor, honor what the intent is.
Can you guys hear well enough what's going on, and is to the point where you're, feel comfortable piping in if you wanted to? Don't want to ignore you just because it's.
Cause you're on a wall.
No, you guys are actually, it's super clear, Lori, on, on this end. You're fine.
All right, awesome. Yeah. Anybody want to weigh in, or you're good with?
My only concern, I think normally you're, the numbers are really good, is like just what would a, a change in like, say the, not the chapter 70, but like the KEIF number or the school choice number, would that have any implication in how much we decide to take? And like essentially, could it, could any part of it be reversible if we hadn't spent it?
Yeah, no, so in this instance, Erin, the answer is no, because the, these were funds that were already appropriated at last May's Town Meeting, right, in 2021. So these are funds that we've already taken into account in chapter 70. We've already taken into account KEIF tech, out-of-district placements. That's all part of the FY22 budget. So this is, there's no risk in terms of what we have now. It's, it's really, you know, the risk is having the faith that we move this to free cash and that taxpayers approve it, so. That's the real risk.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I think the other part of that is, if we have, if we have money at the end of a year, it's supposed to return to free cash.
We always do every year.
Right.
Correct.
And so this, there's, you know, unless we were looking at prepaying curriculum costs or something that we'd incur next year because we had some money at the end of the year, you know, to appropriate for whatever isn't spent, that by law goes to free cash.
Right.
So.
Yep.
There's some risk, but there's also some reality to that.
That's right.
Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I have a motion. So I move that $250,000 from the current FY2022 school operating budget remain unspent with the intent that it fall to free cash and be appropriated to the Mendez School Building Project account at a subsequent Town Meeting.
Second.
And then all in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
An aye for me, thank you. Jim, you have, you do have a report tonight, an update.
Uh, yeah, my report is real short and sweet.
About your evaluation?
Yeah. Now, so, uh, as you know, master general law requires, uh, school committee to evaluate the superintendent, uh, and, uh, we're at that point, typically we do this, um, if we are, if we are looking at a change in the school committee, uh, in terms of, uh, board turnover, we might have, we would have had this, uh, conversation already, uh, because typically we would have, uh, the, the five sitting members perform the evaluation. All five are back after the election. Congratulations, Paul and Erin, on their stellar wins on Tuesday. Um, and as we move forward, uh, the June 2nd, the first meeting in, uh, June, uh, typically we would then have, uh, the, um, evaluation, um, since we, we do not have a change in the board. What I would ask is I did share the document, uh, with folks, it's the same document we've used, uh, in the process, uh, is approved, um, under master general law. Tina, I'm certainly willing to sit down with you if you want to have a conversation about looking at that document, uh, in terms of the rubric, uh, and, uh, the process, uh, but it, I think it's pretty clear within the document, uh, what we go through. Uh, we did have a midterm cycle, um, review, just about three weeks ago, probably. Um, but that being said, I will share with the school committee a folder, uh, with some evidence in there based on those goals that we had talked about. Uh, so the six goals that were set up at the beginning of the year, uh, the conversation we had at the mid-cycle review was they were not all going to be met, uh, it was pretty clear about that. Um, and so you'll review the goals and the progress made on goals, but then also looking at the four standards, uh, as set forth by, um, the, the Department of Ed, uh, in terms of evaluations for administrators. Um, the, the key component of this is making sure that this is a public, this has to be done in, in, uh, in public, uh, that we get, um, the chair, uh, information, uh, for the, uh, evaluation. And I wrote down, Lori, and, and, you know, if, if folks can, um, our next meeting is, is June 2nd. I don't know what works well for you in terms of being able to, to collate and, and write that one narrative that you, that we submit.
Right.
Um, I had written down by next Friday, but, uh, you know, that's sort of, it's a week from now, but we can also push this out to the June 16th, um, which is our final meeting as well, depending upon where folks' schedule is, so.
Well, what, what do folks have going on in their lives? Like what's realistic for you to be able? So I, I prefer to have a few days before the meeting because, and, and I'm going to, I'm just going to go over the process again, because Tina, you haven't done this yet, right? And for anybody in the public who's watching and wants to know, I know the rest of you have done it many times and you're probably sick of hearing about it, but it, it is a little, it is much more comprehensive than the mid-cycle. This time we are expected to look at the evidence, um, which it sounds like it's coming by email in a folder. We used to go into your office and.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a.
Spend some time there.
It'll be attached to it. You'll need to use your Ashland account.
It'll be in Google Drive.
Because it's a Google Drive, it's a Google folder.
Okay.
And you'll have to, but you, you won't be able to log in if you're not part of Gmail.
So there's two parts to the evaluation. There's a rubric, which is, you know, very comprehensive, and then there are, um, and we're supposed to go and take a look at the evidence to be able to answer those questions. And then there are answers that we give to whether or not the goals were met with information backing your answer up, yes or no the goals were met or not yet, or whatever your answer is. Then, uh, they all need to come to me. Um, I like to have like at least a few days before the meeting because what happens is all of those documents need to get put into one document and then it's presented to Jim as one voice, the voice of the committee. So it's one piece of feedback, it's super important because, uh, first of all, and most importantly, it lets Jim know how he's doing, how we're evaluating him, it lets the community know how their superintendent is doing, whether or not he or she has met the goals, and it also is tied to your compensation. So, you know, how we, how it's part of Jim's contract, how we rate him, so it's so super important that we get it right. If everyone gets it to me at least three days in advance, so I have time to sit down and make sure that, um, I create a narrative that includes all of your voices, um, because everybody has a little bit, something different to say, and it, it can be a little tricky to get the right, uh, voice, you know, that, that everybody will be happy with and feel like it represents what you wanted to get across. So that's the reason why I like a little bit of time. Um, I need, I'll say three days, but whether or not that's next week or the meeting after that, I'm going to let you guys, let me know.
I'd like to throw out that I think next week is going to, it's going to put pressure on people to get it done, it's going to be, you're going to be lobbed something late. Uh, so I would say let's do it the 16th and let's set a deadline that's further in advance, right? So that gives you, because, because you don't know.
What's going to come up for people?
Yeah, you, you, you might not be able to do it and, and, you know, uh, we all have stuff that comes up.
And that's happened for me too, where I set the time aside and things have come up.
So why don't we look at the calendar, if, if we're meeting on the 16th, then I think sometime that previous week, whether it be, you know, 7th or, I think we need to give, give you enough time, but I think that gives us.
Just make it a weekday, because I think sometimes when it's the weekend, people aren't, you know, so let's say the Friday of the week before, right? And then it's due on the following Thursday?
Let's, let's give you a week, so why don't we get it to you by, why don't we, why don't we give it to you by the 8th?
8th?
No, I like, I like the 8th.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we'll get it to you by the 8th.
Give it to me by the 8th.
That way you can start it and have a full week to.
Process everything.
To do whatever you need to do.
And compile it. And then, um, and just again, Tina, this is mostly for you, not to, to point you out, but everybody's, even though it's going to be one evaluation from the group, that's the official evaluation, all of the things that we do are public, so Jim will eventually get everybody's individual feedback, but what we present as the committee evaluation will be the narrative that's created from the compilation. So, uh, just like Jim said, if, if anybody has any questions along the way and wants to sit down with me or give me a call, I'm happy to go through that.
Just one clarification on that, the only thing that's public record is the file document.
Yeah.
You write the individual ones are part of personnel file.
Oh, okay. So, but you will share them with Jim, but they won't be shared with the public. Thank you. My attorney has spoken.
And just for.
One of three that you're guessing.
And for the folks who are just looking, uh, who are tuned in online, I, I'm just sharing the actual, the summative component that, that people, folks will see, right? It's the, the, the goals, the standards, the four standards. Oh, there, it's coming back up. And then, and then comments that, that again help form the narrative.
Right.
And this is what I was talking about, uh, these are the six goals that were set, uh, below, there, there's evidence, but I will share a folder that shows specifically how some of these things are being met or not met. I, I also write myself, uh, a reflection piece, uh, to let you know how I feel I've done in terms of meeting these goals or making progress, et cetera. I think that's an important component for me as well, uh, to reflect on where we've, um, moved forward or where, uh, we haven't been able to move forward.
Well, we've done that in the past, Jim, have we typically seen your sort of self-evaluation?
Yeah.
A week before?
Yeah, you'll see it in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's pretty well written now, and so if, if we were going to choose the next Friday, you'd get it over the weekend.
Right.
But now that I can clean it up even more, so.
And again, for anyone who's just tuning in for the first time, the goals were set by the school committee, we, we, um, deliberated on them, we, we voted them, and they're our goals, but the, the, uh, rubric that we use and the paperwork that we use is, is part of the, um, process that we follow from the state. And that's, we adopted that years ago and we continue to use that process. So, um, it's online if anybody wants to see what it looks like, um, and then the goals are, have been voted and I'm sure they're online somewhere too on our website.
Everything is, yep.
Okay. Um, all right, everybody good with that? Questions, comments, changes?
Just Jim, what, you say we're going to get the evidence, um, Google Drive link?
Probably, I'll probably put it out next week and, you know, if, now that you're not looking to get stuff to Lori until, um, what, the 5th, 8th? So in, in, in the next week, you'll have it, Erin.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
And as, uh, the wrap-up of the superintendent update, which I didn't put on here, uh, it, two things, one, uh, the school improvement plans typically come to the school committee, uh, before, uh, the end of the, the school year. Uh, I have asked the administrators, they've worked hard on them with some site council, uh, to actually hold off on that until the, the strategic plan is finalized. I think we typically try to tie school improvement plans into our strategic plan, uh, and, which makes good sense. Um, we're having this conversation about the strategic plan being ready for the school committee in the July workshop, uh, so as soon as it's approved at that level, it'll go back and I would anticipate in, within the first couple of meetings of the, um, of the year, the next site council will approve, you know, will approve and then bring forward to the school committee for approval. What I have asked our principals to do however, is come to the next meeting, the June 2nd meeting, and provide a five-minute synopsis of what they've been working on within their site councils for this year. I think you should hear from them, uh, the, the work that they've been doing. So is that amenable to everyone here?
Sounds great.
Excellent.
Great.
Um, next up, Mike, did you have anything tonight?
Sure, just, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, on Monday, Jenna Lorenega joined, uh, joined Mendez to, uh, speak with the Mendez faculty and staff, it was great to welcome Jenna, uh, and, you know, we are looking forward to her getting started, so I thought it would be important to let everybody know that she did come by and was able to speak to the staff, which was great.
Excellent.
Uh, this Friday is that prom day that we were talking about, so it's professional development, it's our last professional development day for our, our whole entire staff, pre-K to 12. Uh, major focus on curriculum, curriculum development, looking at our UBDs, the understanding by design documents that we have in place. Uh, folks are spending a lot of time looking at assessment, uh, particularly our, uh, upper elementary folks are going to be looking at some common assessments that we can put in place for math. Uh, Kelly's staff is going to be doing a lot of work on assessment as well. Um, Dave's folks are going to be working on, um, a few different things about self-care, uh, as well as developmental relationships, and, um, we're excited that our pre-K to two staff with a, a few folks from Mendez are going to be getting, um, some, some significant training in the Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program that we're bringing in, so we're excited about, about getting that going too. So that's what's going on on Friday, so that's about all I have right now.
Good stuff. Anyone questions, comments for Mike? Anyone? Okay. Paul, warrant approvals?
Sure. Uh, between May 6th, 2022 and May 19th, 2022, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $363,768.90. This includes general fund expenses of $282,572.65, revolving expenses of $69,802.50, grant expenses of $11,330.44, and meals tax, uh, in, you know, meals tax expense of, uh, $63.31. I also signed off on $1,160,141.19 of payroll.
Thank you. Okay, minutes, April 28th, 2022, anybody have anything on those? Motion?
Move to approve the minutes of April 20, 2022 as presented?
Second.
All in favor, Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me, and then next up, May 5th, 2022, anybody?
Move to approve the minutes of May 5, 2022 as presented?
Second.
All in favor, Erin?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye, and then, uh, do we have gifts and donations?
We do, and before we move to that, I, I forgot to mention, uh, on June 2nd, we will also be celebrating, uh, our retirees for this year. We'll be inviting, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
So we'll be inviting those folks in.
Will we be doing some, anything beforehand for them?
I, my mic wasn't on, so I want to make sure, uh, so I, I just mentioned that we would be celebrating our retirees, uh, on June 2nd. We will not be having a, a celebration beforehand, it'll just happen, uh, here at the meeting.
At the meeting, okay?
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, so gifts and donations, the Ashland Education Foundation, $5,200, uh, to a variety of funds, Ashland High School, David Mendez, uh, to increase inclusivity in the AHS, improve mental and physical health through movement. Uh, a number of folks there, um, the Andrew McKay, Dan Powers, Bethy Ledoux, um, the principals at, um, the high school and David Mendez. Uh, Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated, $2.06, uh, spiritware residuals, um, for a total of $5,202.06.
Motion to approve the gifts and donations?
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented?
A second.
All in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
An aye for me. Member updates? Who wants to start? Any, the virtual folks want to start?
I'll go. Thank you, Ashland, for re-electing me. Hopefully I can win back that one vote that I lost to Paul by, but.
I'm never going to live that down.
I didn't mention it, she did.
Tina, any updates from you?
No, not tonight.
Paul?
Uh, so steel started, uh, on Monday, uh, steel erection started, I, I couldn't believe, uh, how much they got up in one day. They, they set up the crane, they laid out their steel and they got to work and, and, uh, you know, after months and months of playing in the dirt, it seemed like, uh, to see such change in, in a day is, is, is cool. Uh, I also, Jenna, uh, took the opportunity to meet Jenna and do, do a sit walk with Jenna when she met with the, with the faculty on, on Friday as well, so, um, Jenna has, you know, is in the process of completing a building and, and moving into a building in our district, so, uh, she'll be valuable, uh, during the process for us as well, so, uh, so we're going to, you know, we're, we're extending, um, you know, her the opportunity to participate at whatever level she's available and interested to in the process and, until she's officially on board, so, but, uh, yeah, I think that's, I think, I think that sums it up.
I've got a couple of things, um, one from the MASC board, one of the, one of the, um, sort of goals the board had set this year was to try to find a way to engage with students and, and we've talked, um, sort of on and off for a while about, you know, what, what is the role of the student rep? Like we have Rahim here, typically we've always had, um, folks, um, be present at our meetings, you know, it's general proposition, obviously, and this, uh, here and there, like tonight. Um, and so there was a, a sort of an initial meeting of a group of student reps to school committees from around the state, um, at a district, I think it was up, um, North Shore Tech, I forget what exactly it's called, but, um, but 30, 30 kids participated, it's going to be something that, we're going to try it out, see how it goes, um, but, you know, certainly as I said offline, it, it sure, St. Kerr is aware of, of that, so that when they do elect the person for next year, we can try to, uh, make that opportunity known to them and they can choose whether to participate or not. Um, I think just a couple of things from, um, Site Council today, it was the Ashland High School Site Council, um, a lot of discussion about X Block and doing a survey to sort of evaluate whether X Block has been successful, that's been good, how it works, um, and those, if you don't have kids there yet, X Block is sort of a 22-minute block within the schedule where students have opportunities to do different things other than their courses. Um, and some of that's opportunity for physical breaks, some of that's opportunity for enhanced learning and different, different things that might, they might be interested in. Um, and then also some just talk about sort of looking at how this past year has gone, um, and perhaps the need to sort of try to really get back to expectation setting for next year. Um, there's, you know, concerns just about how everybody has worked so hard to help kids get through this year, um, that, that stands for discipline and, and some other expectations, um, have, have sort of lessened a little bit or, and that not, on, not without intent, but, um, the need to sort of get back to some sort of more basic things that have happened in the past. So nothing really specific on that, but, um, some just good discussion among Ms. St. Kerr, um, Ms. LaChapelle, a couple of staff members who were there and some parents that, um, be interested to see how that plays out next year. That's what I have.
Thank you. I was just going to share that I did do, I know you all did too, um, sat with the strategic planning folks and had a conversation as well as the equity audit folks, um, and I believe at this point they've spoken to all of us?
Yes.
Yeah, and they will be moving further along in their process, um, talking to, to other people in the community as well as people in the administrative team and staff and so forth, so that's all I've got. Action items, we, you know, we talked about them, we're going to have principals next[1708.41]